Mayor Wendy.
Here.
Alderman King.
Here.
Banker.
Here.
Mask.
Here.
Van Kampen.
Here.
Nederhoff.
Here.
Hunt. Brondike. Van Zuiden. Very good, and at this time we all stand and say the pledge of allegiance to the flag is at the front of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. We go on to recognition of volunteers, and we don't have any this evening, but I'm going to take this opportunity for anybody who's speaking tonight to use their drama voice, as Mr. Luker would say, and project. We are recording, hoping, hoping, to get this so it can be viewed the next day as a live feed type thing. So, and that's to create transparency, it's to help the public know what we're doing here a little bit so they don't have to come to the meetings. And so if I can ask everybody to speak up, that would be great. All right, and then we have communications from visitors, and this is any communication that is not on the agenda for consideration. Anyone wishing to speak? Mike, you don't want to speak?
Oh, the board that I'm here, do you want me to speak now or?
Nope, I don't have you on, so let's have you speak.
Good evening, Mayor Constance. I was asked to come and just make some brief comments regarding the proposed action item to vote on $100,000 to the Drives Building. Alderman King called to me several weeks ago, and the mayor called to me on Friday. I'm not sure if there's a misunderstanding or narrative. I just want to say that when I was mayor, when the council voted, you know, that there was no pledge or discussion about future funding of that project. I did check the minutes at that time. When we voted finally after that 18, 20-month period, we voted to sell it to the Historical Society and wish them basically, you know, good luck, Godspeed. At that time, there was no from myself or any other council person that I recall that said, please come back and we'll give you more money. Obviously, any group can come and ask for funding for any project. In this case, I would ask that the council look at this. I mean, $100,000 is $100,000. I've always maintained, and I think the council at that time, you know, you have your must-haves, your should-haves, and your nice-to-haves. It's a matter of priorities with limited resources. I would ask that if when you vote tonight, you look at those things, I mean, it's $25,000 per ward if you broke it down. What items in your ward could be done? Streets, sidewalks, drainage? What could the police department do with an extra $100,000 in a budget? The second point I would bring out, and this is in no way hopefully a disparaging remark, but you have a group that has a $350,000 taxpayer-funded grant, and their challenge is to privately raise $350,000. I'm not privy to where they are on that, but if the fact that they're coming here asking for another $100,000 taxpayer money, I think your calculus should, and I think a due diligence would be questions raised about the long-term or even short-term financial liability of this project. My third comment would be directed, I guess, to the city attorney. Is Alderman Mask, would she be allowed to vote, or should she ask meaning because of conflict of interest?
Offhand, I have to check on it, but I don't think there is, but.
Okay. I would only comment that, you know, that a city elder person has a conflict of interest if they are, in fact, the head of or a major leadership position of a group that is going to benefit from her vote.
Well, potentially, it's a non-proper position, but I can check.
Okay. Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Now I have on the list Bridget Kramer. Did you mind you?
Yep.
Do I have to go up there, or can I sit? You can just stand where you're at.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Bridget Kramer, Kramer with a K. And I'm here tonight because I would like to ask city council and the mayor if I could have Running with Rory, which is a 5K. It would be June 24th, and we would do that all up on the bike test. So we would love to have that again this year.
I think it would, all you have to do is fill out the paperwork that we have, and then we can bring that paperwork back, but that's all you're going to need to do. And I'm sure, you know, the vote before the council. And it went well last year, and it always grows.
Yeah, yeah.
Good for you.
What paperwork is it that I have to fill out? I don't remember it from last year, but I don't remember what I did yesterday sometimes. So, you know.
It's a special event? Special event?
Yeah, just so we can just stop by in the city hall and we get you a special event application. Go ahead and fill that out.
Okay.
And then that should, once everything's taken care of on that, you get your approval after the city administrator signs off on it.
Okay, okay.
And Chief is really happy to hear that it's just going to be on the dyke. I know that that was a plus for him, so that's why he's grinning.
We've done really well with that the past couple of years. Like, the first year, we were very busy. We had a lot of participants, and last year our numbers were down. But we would really like to have a lot more community support as well because we would like to organically probe this, you know, for as long as I'm able to do this. I want to have it every year in honor of my husband.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. I have two other things, but I didn't write them down separately. Should I have wrote each topic on?
You can, you can keep speaking.
Okay.
On timing.
Okay, go for it. Just tell me when my timing is.
Yeah, I will.
So we're also preparing for the Dutch Phase 5K.
Okay.
Okay. So that this year will also be all up on the Fulton Riverfront. We'll start at KT3, so we'll go down like just those couple of blocks, start by Fulton Corp., and then go all the way down and come back. So I just wanted to let this group know. Also, we would love it if we could get some volunteers to help out that day. So we would need, we're looking for like five to 10 volunteers, someone to help in the morning between like 8:30 and 9:00 to get things going for that. We're going to start it at 9:00. And then maybe to, maybe to have citizens, residents, council members, like cheering people on as they go through. And maybe just a couple to help at the end. And that would.
What's the time of that?
The start time will be 9 o'clock for the 5K.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll see, we'll see if we can get some publicity out there to get you those volunteers, so that.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
That's what it'll take. So we can put it on our Visit Fulton page and things like that.
So.
Your item?
When it comes time, can you put Running with Rory on the Visit Fulton page too?
You bet.
Great. Okay, my third item, and then I promise I'll be quiet for maybe the remainder of the meeting. I have a question about ordinances, about loose running dogs in town.
I'm going to look to Chief Nebbling.
So we do have an ordinance that prohibits dogs running at large. But unless we know about it and can get there and get our hands on a dog that's running at large, it can be tough at times. So if you know of one that's consistent, you've got video of the dog running around, just stop down, call, and we'll try to get some solutions to that.
I have noticed that there have been more dogs like out just running, and it bothers me because like, of course, I have my two Beagles. I love my dogs, try to be responsible for them. But I also walk all the time, and that's one reason why I live in Fulton is because I love it here. I love the green space. There's a lot of kids that walk to school or walk home from school that are all over. But I'm concerned about the dogs that are kind of running at large. And then, so if I understand it correctly, animal control no longer comes to pick up that dog or what is the process?
So we do animal control, we're under contract to them, they're based on Rock Falls. So if we, we have to get the dog first.
You have to get the dog first.
Once we get hands on the dog, we will contact animal control, then they come out and they pick the dog up.
Okay. And this is a resident that has had their dog picked up, say, three times. Do they get a ticket, a fine or something?
If, as long as we, we, if we get the dog in possession of it, they would get a ticket. If not, if this animal control gets it, they also can issue tickets on our behalf.
Okay, okay. I just want to make it noted that I have seen a lot more dogs running loose than.
We've picked up more in the last six months than we have probably in the last two years as well. So I, I'm aware.
Okay, great. Maybe that's something that you could put out, like, I don't use social media, but Facebook or whatever, you know, to alert the residents.
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, we have Mike and Jessica Van Kampen, but I think you're going to want to speak during the approval of, for the zoning board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, okay. Okay, for all the votes, now we have a presentation, and that's the Drives Historical Building, and Jane Armond would like to address it as best she can.
Well, I would like to be deferred, if we may, until the next council meeting, and the reason being, some of our members who are planning to speak tonight are unable to be here because of illness and other, another commitment. And then some of our people who are wanting to speak, this is spring break. So if we could be deferred until your next meeting, that would be appreciated.
We still have an action item on the agenda. So that action item needs to go forward. So, but can I ask that you defer that? Can you amend your agenda to do that? Is that appropriate to ask?
You can if you want. It's up to the council. There's no requirement to put raising this name.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to take this off for this evening. May I have a motion?
Got a motion in the second.
And a motion, who's the first motion?
I think Barb will motion.
Barb? Anybody second?
No second.
Okay, Dan seconding. So now we need roll call to see if we can defer this till next meeting. So if you vote yes, you say you can defer it. Vote no, you want to vote it on tonight. Right. Alderman King.
No.
Banker.
No.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
No.
Nederhoff.
Yes.
Brondike Van Zuiden. So. Yeah, it passes with three, so we're, we're going to take the action this evening later on the agenda. Okay? All right, we're going to go on to number seven, and that's the consent agenda. And these are all the items that are listed there. It's to approve the special council meeting minutes. It's to approve the treasurer's report, and to approve the bill list as presented. May I have a, thank you, Keith, and a second?
A second.
And discussion or questions?
I have one. It needs to be corrected. Has Alderman Van Kampen stated, why are we not asking more money to sell the price? I asked, why are we asking, not why now?
That's corrected, okay. So we are going, I need a motion again now to, for the consent agenda with the corrections as presented. Okay, and a second?
A second.
Okay, and roll call, please. Alderman Banker.
Yes.
Brondike. Nederhoff.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Hunt. Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. King.
Yes.
Okay, we go on to number eight of the business. All items listed may be acted upon. The first one is to approve the petition moving forward with annexation for the Sloan implement into the corporate, sit, into the corporate limits of the city of Fulton. Excuse me. And Dan, I'm going, well, let's have the motion and the second.
I'll second.
Okay, and Dan, if you would explain a little bit?
So Eric Maloney called up on behalf of Sloan. He was asking to bid and extend. Got an application from Bill. What they want to do is build some buildings out there, and they're having difficulty in doing that with the county. So what they're doing is asking if they move, you could move into the city limits, which will add to our taxes, obviously, which significantly we'd love to have them in here. And it's kind of a win-win, and then they'll be able to get their billings probably a little bit, little bit easier. Now, now they did ask for utilities too, and we do not have them available, so.
And this is just a motion to start the process, so we have to pass amendments and do some hearings before this is moved, etc. But this sets the motion, sets it in motion.
It's a nice, nice invitation for us to get that, very much sales tax, bill stuff. And Twister Shipper did that as well, too. They annexed in that.
And law office.
Yes, and high law office. This is, this is a nice thing to happen. So there's a motion, and then just a second. May I have roll call if there's no further questions? Alderman King.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Nederhoff.
Yes.
Hunt. Brondike Van Zuiden. Okay, we're going with the letter B, and the motion, I need a motion to approve the city hall slash police department generator for $12,000.
I think that motion that is going to the office, I think, is coming out of there.
Very good. And a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? We've discussed this about three months in a row. I think it's a great thing. It's great, it's what we can use the ARPA funds for, and it's needed in case something happens to the community. We can keep the hub of the emergency area up and running, so. Without any further ado, may I have roll call? Alderman Hunt. Nederhoff.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Brondike. Van Zuiden. We go on to letter C. I need a motion to approve the Marina loan in the amount of $150,000 at 5% interest for 10 years through Central Bank.
I make the motion.
And a second? And Dan, will you explain that this will, is through our, Eric?
I'll let Eric, yeah.
Okay.
So this is going to include our dredging, the repairs to the boat docks. We are going to be doing some work to the actual ramps themselves as well, so that it just kind of includes everything within that $150,000. So there's a lot of work being done within this, this $150,000.
But the loan itself has to run through the city, but the Marina is paying the loan back. So it's not, you know, the Marina is self-sustaining.
Correct.
And we want to make sure that everyone knows that, so. But the loan, because the Marina is ours, has to stay with us, so. Any other questions? May I have roll call? Alderman Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. Banker.
Yes.
Brondike. King.
Yes.
Nederhoff.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Hunt. Very good, we go on to letter D. And that is, I need a motion to approve the backhoe loan in the amount of $62,750 at 3.75% interest for three years through Central Bank. And so, and Eric, would you like to explain this one?
So this is for the purchase of our new backhoe, which is probably our most used piece of equipment that we do have. The other one's starting to show some age, and the opportunity presented itself to, to make an upgrade and do, it'd be a good asset for us to have, so that's what this is for.
Any other questions? Then may I have roll call, please? Alderman Nederhoff.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. King.
Yes.
Hunt. Brondike. Van Kampen.
Yes.
We go on to letter E, and I need a motion to approve to waive bids for the Progress Drive project's amount of $120,000.
Can't afford this one? You require six votes, so you don't have six people here? So to waive bids requires a two-thirds vote of the council, the mayor not voting?
Oh, with me not voting, I can't vote, okay. All right.
You don't have enough, it's all right.
Oh, spooky.
Definitely to waive bids, to waive the bids requires a two-thirds vote of the eight.
Okay, very good, thank you, Bill. And then we go on to letter F, which is, I need a motion to approve calendar parking. That's in the packet. I'll make that motion. And is.
The motion should be an ordinance. You're talking about the ordinance?
Yes.
That's an ordinance, so it'd be a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Ordinance as presented in front of us. Okay, and we have a motion to approve and a second? Are there any questions? Then hearing none, sorry. Can I have roll call, please? Alderman Hunt. Nederhoff.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Brondike. Van Zuiden. Very good, now I need a motion to approve April 6, 2023 as Junior Achievement Day, and those are on pages 36 to 38.
I make that motion.
And a second? We do this every year, so if there's no further questions, roll call, please. Alderman Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. Banker.
Yes.
Brondike. King.
Yes.
Nederhoff.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Hunt. Very good, motion passes. We go on to letter H. I need a motion to approve a baseball banner signed in the amount of $200 requested by Barb Brands from the Kiwanis. Should read.
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Yes, I can say.
Okay. Roll with the movement.
Yeah.
And, and I will say, this is a courtesy to the council to create transparency. This did not need to go before the council. Could have been a decision that the city administrator made, but to keep the council informed on all expenditures, we brought it to them as well, so may I have roll call, please? Alderman Nederhoff.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. King.
Yes.
Hunt. Brondike. Van Kampen.
Yes.
Very good, we go on to letter I, and that, I need a motion to approve Drives Historical Building donation of $100,000 request, and that was going to be given through ARPA funds. May I have a motion? And a second?
Well, can we have a chance to speak if we were asked?
Well, after the second. Yeah? Okay, and now, is there any questions or comments?
We might as well present, Jane, even though we don't have everybody clear that we've actually planned, at least to ask. This is the term that you could.
I don't have all of the information here. Would you like to?
We thought we could get permission to just, right, defer because we do have people not here to, but go through our best. We're looking upon this as an investment in the community, and it would be covering a wide variety of people, from the youth through the elderly. And so that's why we're coming back to you. Yes, we did get a grant for $350,000, and we're very near to matching that. We're rather excited because we think we may be in the running for another grant. We won't know that immediately, but that will mean that we have to raise another $350,000. We're pretty confident we can do that. It may take time, and it has taken us time to reach this point simply because ratio, pandemic, it's been a slow time in the stock market, so we've had a number of issues. We also are about eight weeks probably at least from having bids awarded to us. But here's one of the things that we hope to do, is have a STEM room for children, and we also hope to be able to use that area for some of the cooking classes at the high school. And also, we're hoping that some of the construction trade groups can help with the remodeling, particularly in the older section of the building. So let me read one letter of support. It is my great pleasure to partner with the community members who are leading the initiative to restore the Drives Building. As the Riverbend Superintendent of Schools, I have personally worked with many of those involved in overseeing the restoration of the Drives Building, and can assure you that their commitment and dedication to improving our community through this restoration project is promising. Many of those involved have taken on similar community endeavors, and have the knowledge and will seek the project through. I also have been asked to comment on the many uses of the Drives Building from a school district's standpoint. Since the inception of this idea, those involved in the planning have asked for school district input. I have offered many suggestions with the Drives Planning Committee that have been considered. From the beginning of the planning, a community science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics or STEAM room has been a part of their vision. The planning team has partnered with Stacy Gates, a Fulton High School science teacher, to fully understand what STEAM activities would be valuable as a community learning space. I applaud their vision for creating such an enriching space for the community. America has seen, has always been a world leader in science, technology, arts, engineering, and math because visionaries have pioneered and fostered ways for our young people to be inspired. The Drives Planning Team has a vision that will continue to provide opportunities and inspiration to your next generation. Their goal is to provide a community room full of STEAM materials and activities that are accessible to school-aged children and adults. A STEAM room of this nature will set Fulton apart from many communities and show that our students matter and that Fulton cares about growing the next generation of scientists, engineers, mathematicians, and those involved in the arts. The planning team has also shared their vision for a food service space. That can be used for catering and food preparation. Fulton High School has recently expanded its culinary arts program and has provided opportunities for students to cater events. When the Drives Building is ready to open, in its catering and food service spaces, the culinary students at Fulton High School can partner with Drives staff and provide catering as well as cooking opportunities for the students at Fulton High School. These partnerships are valuable and allow students to have real-world opportunities to use their culinary skills. I look forward to seeing how students at Fulton High can support this great community space. Not only has the Drives Planning Team thought about how to create opportunities for students, they've also thought about using the students at Fulton High School to complete some, complete some of the construction with the building. The Fulton High School building praise classes have greatly expanded their knowledge and workload under the leadership of Jason Snyder. Mr. Snyder and his students recently completed a full remodel of a secured entrance space at Fulton High School. The Drives Planning Committee are meeting with Mr. Snyder to see if the students can take on part of the remodeling of the Drives Building. Having the students complete the work will provide another and real-world job for them to learn and apply their skills. Having students complete the work will also reduce the cost of the building project. The committee is passionate about Fulton and enhancing the lives of the community members. Fulton has had so many wonderful aspects for a small town. A community center for all generations would further enhance the life of its residents. I hope you will join me in supporting the efforts of the Drives Committee by supporting the building restoration project. I truly believe that those that use the science STEM spaces will be engaged and enriched for spending time in the space. I also know that our culinary arts students can use the space to further enrich their studies. I really like the idea that our construction students have an opportunity to help complete their remodeling. I know that firsthand how much the construction classes enjoy completing the construction at Fulton High School. Please consider supporting in any manner possible the restoration projects that the Drives Building Committee is undertaking. Those on the committee have a proven track record, and this project will truly. Those on the committee have a proven track record, and this project will truly bless the community and many of its generations." One of the other letters of support that we've had is from the Meat Market, and that gentleman says, "Writing on behalf of the Fulton Historical Society, I ask the council to consider their request for monetary support to help their endeavor in restoring the former Drives Office Building. Their vision of the building would be beneficial economically for the city, as it would offer a venue big enough to be used for social, educational, and community purposes. As a business owner in downtown Fulton, I believe an event center can be an asset to bring visitors and our tourists to our area. And as I have spoken to you before, we know what an asset that building can be because whenever the boat's back in Clinton, we don't have enough room in the Windmill and the Culture Center to accommodate an entire bus full. So we either have to leave those people on the bus, part of them, while we give the tour of the Windmill and the Windmill Culture Center, and then switch, or they have to stand outside and wait. Well, when we've had boats, sometimes we've had downpours. So when we did have the Drives Building at one point, and we were able to use part of it, that was great. But as you know, that has no ADA. It's not ADA compliant. So that's one of the big things that we have to do to get that building back in working order. We have done the demolition. We have taken the asbestos out. We've put a new roof on it. We have spent over $312,000 or $323,000 on that building already. We are committed to doing more, but we think that the council needs to invest in our community and help us. We see that as an opportunity for this community to grow. We know that visitors come here. We know that we have tours coming from all over the world to Fulton, Illinois, and they want to see the Mississippi River. We have a wonderful exhibit of Mississippi memorabilia and the floods of '65. People, when we had that as an exhibit at the Culture Center, they loved it. People came back to see it. People come to the Mississippi to see it all the time. So this would be one more thing that will bring people into our community, we feel. And if and when we get the funds to do that upstairs room, that of course will be a reception area, and we know that we can handle wedding receptions. We can handle, in the downstairs, bridal showers, family reunions, class reunions, whatever. So the opportunities for us exist, but we have to step up to the plate. It's not going to happen by itself, but you have... I'm one of the worker bees, and we are committed to making it happen and growing Fulton, because we think we can, and we think this community needs a community center. When the fire station was sold, we lost it. And then, of course, the other things that happened with pandemic and the duratio, that slowed us down, but we're willing to continue to work, but we do need your financial investment to help our community from young to old. Thank you. One of the economic development directors was planning to be here tonight, but she still, and she was going to talk about the economic impact of people coming into the community. So you'll miss that portion of it. Thank you.
Jane, you're asking the money to come from the ARPA funds, correct? That's the way I understand when Chuck was here.
That's, yes, my understanding is that that's where they were thinking the funds could come from.
But I, on today, I have not seen where from the ARPA, where we are allowed to use those for that money. We can use that money for that.
Well, the reason that we thought we probably would qualify was because the county has had monies available, and they have been able to use that for 501(c)(3) organizations, for getting them back in...
Because I have the list here that we are not eligible for that.
I think Dan has that statement, Dan, that you can only give, according to ARPA guidelines, you can only give it to 501(c)(3), which is what we are.
I don't, I don't have that specifically.
Okay.
I didn't research that.
I thought I'd given that to you. I've read that. Only 501(c)(3). Now we've noticed...
Well, is there any other opportunity, you know, for the city to support us in some way? Obviously...
Well, I was just going by what Chuck presented to us, was the ARPA funds.
And I wasn't privy to that information. I don't know about that.
So...
I'm not specific on that, but it doesn't state specifically 501(c)(3), but...
No.
A lot of things are in there, and I've seen them spin on it, but, you know, where's the gray area? I don't know.
There's some good information on IML. I didn't check it. It's been months since I put, I don't remember.
We pulled it, and we have it up there, but it has to be an existing community center to give the monies for improvement. So that's where I think we kind of got a little off, that we thought that that was capable to...
I have read it. I have...
Here, Nick just pulled it up, and he can read it.
A recipient of ARPA funds, in this case county government, can provide funds to an entity, including a nonprofit organization, for the purpose of directly benefiting the entity as a result of the entity experiencing a public health impact.
It meets the criteria in every way. I, we weren't, we don't have it with us because we were asking for a deferment tonight.
Well, I can see it.
So it does, it does, it does qualify.
Well, Mayor, I would like, I just want to say, and I wanted to be known, my feelings as mayor of this community, I was here when that, I fought for that building to be given to you and...
Right here.
Right here. And I also heard that the city isn't to give any more monies towards it. And now that I'm sitting on this side of the bench, I applaud your efforts. I think you know that I've always thought that that building has potential, but this was a task that you decided to take on yourselves, but it absolutely was said that they would not come back to the city for any monies whatsoever. So my hope and wish is that you could find a developer with real deep pockets, because I don't want to see it go away, but I also don't believe it should be, have money, city money spent for it.
So you don't think that you should be investing in the community then, for the good of the people?
Not in a private, not in a private...
We're not private. We're not private.
No, you're, you're, you're an exempt 501(c)(3) charitable organization that has taken on this project, and so that's, that's exactly how I feel. So is anybody else wanting to address?
I do have my notes from, I was, I fought hardly for that building, and I still believe in it, but it was from November 12, 2018. And now these are my written notes. That's when we request from the Historical Society to purchase the Drives Building, and the administrator requests that the city advertise for bids over a three-week period and then select the bid that is the best interest. Okay. And then it had the pros and cons in the city. Okay, the remarks were made that if they do sell the building, now there was nothing in the midst of the notes, or these were just notes why they would, they didn't want the building back if it didn't succeed. They did not want the building back. There will be no utilities or anything given to the building, and no city money is to be, come to, for no city money to be put into the building.
But Sue, my recollection of that is, that was from the sale of the fire station, that that money was not going to go...
No, it's the Drives Building, right here.
No, but I meant, no money from the sale of the fire station would go towards the Drives Building.
Oh, well, I didn't...
See, at the same time this was happening, the community, the 501(c)(3) was buying the fire station, and most of us thought that money was going to go to...
A community center.
To, we were going to keep a...
I didn't have that down.
The council was committed to keeping a community center, and that money was going to go from one building to another, and then there was a reversal.
I didn't have that here. I didn't. I'm sorry, Dan.
I just wish you would give us a chance to at least come back with the other evidence we have and why this is important. And then we can verify that this really does fall upon you under ARPA. That's all we're asking for.
Well, there is, and you did ask, and there was a vote, and the vote went through as to go ahead, so we are going ahead. And unless there's any further...
Did you guys apply to the county for ARPA funds?
Yeah.
We did apply to the county for ARPA funds, and most of those dollars went direct, no. We did apply, yes, I have to go back. We did apply, and they awarded most of their funds to organizations that were putting money back into their businesses that we've been down for, I think.
That's what it says here.
There was a remodeling project maybe that Crumpets had. There was a parking lot that Epic Three had. The Friends of the Wind, or the Steering Committee, I should say, for Friends of the Windmill, the Millers and the Educators did get monies, and that was to replace what we had lost in sales over that time and to replace some of our inventory that we lost. So that was money that came to that group, which was the 501(c)(3). But I don't, I don't know, and we didn't have any explanation on why our bid wasn't, or why we weren't funded, so I don't know the answer to the question. And I don't know what the request was, that was for remodeling. I don't remember.
Dan?
Yeah, I just got a few observations. I have a kind of neutral on this whole thing, but I just think about this more and more. First of all, they will do an investment in the community. It is good for Fulton. I totally agree with that, but you're trying to accomplish some of that, and I totally supported that. It is a building that will be used, too. That's the other thing, is something that's going to be used frequently. And I think that's a big plus for people coming into town. The one thing that Mike did not say, that I think everybody should be aware of, had the city not disposed of that building, we were stuck with $100,000 to try to tear it down. I think as a council, we've got to remember that, that they really did us a favor, and then by going forward, they've done a bigger favor to try to make it a good place for Fulton. So we would have paid for this $100,000 anyway.
$153,000 to demolish the building, and that was, vote was taken, then the public not come forward and ask for that to be reconsidered.
And then the other observation I have is if we say, if we're going to deny this, I assume anything in the future that comes to the city council will get denied because it's, it's other issues that we spend money. So I would hope that we keep those options open. I think we've got approval, but this, this is ARPA money. It's not the city's money. It never was the city's money. But like I said, we must spend the $100,000 anyway, or more, so.
We also will, I, here's what they say. This is what I have. Responding to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic, providing premium pay to the essential workers, providing government service to the extent of revenue loss due to the pandemic, making necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband, and infrastructure. That's what I have.
Well, we have just read the...
I think there's more. I don't know what they are. I don't know if this...
All I'm asking the three of you is to let us defer this to next, that we can revisit this next, because we have Alderman missing tonight. And we have other people who didn't want to speak on this. That's all we're asking for. That's all we're asking for.
Well, there was that ask, and there was that motion that we moved forward.
Now, all three of them can...
Well, that's fine. So there's a motion on the table. Let's go forward with the motion. And you're, it's your motion, right, Keith? And we're going to go forward, and put the second.
Did the motion say use of other funds?
Yes. I added it.
They added that.
I added it. I added that down.
That's what Chuck was asking.
That's what I...
That's why I was questioning, that's why I questioned the end.
Right. Okay.
But I think you need a vote.
What was, Bill? What do you...
I think you need expenditure of that size, four yes votes, and it's the problem of not having a full council.
I think we have to have, I think we need three.
I think you need four in this instance.
Because...
Because of the size and expenditure, but let's see what, let's see what you got.
Okay.
Roll call. Van Kampen.
No.
Van Zuiden. Mask.
Yes.
Niederhoff.
Yes.
Brondike. King.
Yes. And no.
No. Hunt. Banker.
No.
I have three no's and two yeses, Bill.
Yeah, that doesn't pass.
Does not pass, okay.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay, we go on to J, which is approve the one-time donation to the Impact Program in the amount to be determined by the council. This has come up four different times, and so I need a motion.
Can we discuss this first before we...
No, we have to, motion, and then a second, and then we can discuss.
We don't have to make a motion if we don't want to discuss.
No, that's exactly right.
No, I want to discuss it.
Okay, so you're making the motion.
Yeah.
You have to do a no.
That's what I, that's what I'm going to discuss, kind of a no. Are they talking about?
I would rather table this and put it in for discussion than to vote on it, especially without it, or it to be determined after we made the motion. I would, I would rather ask to have this table put on next meeting's discussion portion to talk about, because I think if we're going to make the motion, we need to have a no there.
Okay. And so we didn't get a second. Is there anyone else wishing to do a second? We will take piece of ice and put it on next meeting's agenda.
So go back and...
There was no, right, so it died. Right.
Is there a second?
No. One second. All right, and we go on to K, which is I need a motion to approve the recommendation from the zoning board of appeals to grant a garage addition that exceeds 960 square feet. Owner is Jessica North and Kampen.
And you have the ordinance in front, actually, the motion is to approve an ordinance?
Okay.
And that's what was...
You've got right here.
There's one that, I need a variance, no, resume.
This is the variance. We are, we are...
May I ask you a second?
Oh, Paul.
Yep. No, I don't. And so we have a... And no, but is there any discussion? Nope, then I need roll call, please. Alderman Mask.
Yes.
Van Zuiden. Banker.
Yes.
Brondike. King.
Yes.
Niederhoff.
We're proving the ordinance for the garage, the 960 square feet.
Van Kampen.
I'm staying.
Hunt. We have four. There we go.
Welcome to the first ordinance.
Thank you. We're going to try to approve it.
There we go. It's just fine.
I've been a... There's got a lot of room.
There we go on to letter L, approved. This is a motion to, thank you, for recommendation from the zoning board of appeals to grant the rezoning of an industrial to business for the old Harper Crest nursing home, and it's in the form of an ordinance that was presented to us as well in our packets on page 39.
Second.
Very good. Roll call. I think we need discussion on this. Niederhoff.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Very good. The motion passes. We go on to discussion.
I had a question about the, about the business zoning on it.
Yeah.
I guess what is the, is there any stipulations on the business side of it?
No.
I asked about the zoning.
As far as what?
The amount of families looking.
No, now what it does let you do is get you a bigger area to build on though. Like you'll be able to write to your property line personally, you have to have those big setbacks, especially since it's such a large property.
Okay.
It'll be much better for you actually.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a stipulation or, or. I guess the goal is for somewhere around a hundred families. And I wanted to make sure that was for, and stuff can use that water. Yeah, that's right. Here for the new battle. All right, thank you.
New bet. Um, now we go on to the discussion portion and in your packet, we've had it several times, is the business registration form on pages forty and forty-one. Keith and I have talked about adding a twenty-five dollar fee to that business application. Um, is there any questions or does anyone feel that the application itself needs to be redone? Because it gives you lots of information, it gives us emergency contacts, it lets us know when a new business is coming to town. It, it will help with the Airbnb. We have had a little issue with that, not that we can stop it, but it makes us aware of where they're going to be. Because if they have to do a business application, which all Airbnbs or VRBOs are, they would have to fill out this form and at that time we could give them our, um, instructions as far as what it is that they can and cannot do within their, their limits. So this is why it came to be this business registration and I think it's a good idea. I was, I'm a business owner downtown. For, for those people that are starting a business, twenty-five dollars is absolutely nothing compared to what it takes to start a business. And it gives us a good reference of information for every existing business.
If you add the fee, I think you're gonna have to have an ordinance.
That's fine.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be able to pass it tonight.
Oh, we can, anyway.
Why do we need a fee for that? I mean, aren't we really looking for information and being able to identify?
A lot of cities have a registration fee. And to me, that's just one more way that we can maybe help towards a code officer or somebody that does inspections down the road. I mean, the twenty-five dollar minimal fee that this would apply, I think is, holds people accountable too.
I think the plan is a good idea, I just don't see the need for a fee.
I, I would like to see we don't be charged because we're trying to attract business. I mean, I like the, I get having a business plan, but I don't think we should have a fee for the, for the new business.
We're doing us a favor by.
Yeah, they're, they committed to come to our town and then we're gonna. I mean, that's just my opinion, yeah.
Twenty-five dollars or zero is, to me, is nothing.
It's not.
So it's not, it's not issued in my mind, but.
Oh, okay. I think it just shows better.
Okay, this is just discussion, so I want to know what to put on for action item next. Okay, no fee. And Paul?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer on that one right now.
Okay, so it will go on next meeting's agenda with a no fee to approve the one that's in your packet. Okay? Now we go on to the band shell discussion. I was a little disappointed that this didn't get under action item. I apologize, I wasn't, I wasn't here for the agenda making. Um, so we need a discussion about that right now.
Everybody has an email from, uh, a discussion I had with Kerry Kennedy today and that, it pretty well explains why it's not on there. We need a lot of clarification before this moves forward. Um, be good stewards of the money, if you spend over a hundred thousand dollars, I think you really need to know exactly what you're spending it on before you decide to spend it. And we didn't have any clarification on that. Eric's, I've asked Eric to work on the spec for that. So everybody's bidding on the same thing. Kiwanis should not be accepting bids for us. Um, so when, if you decide to do this, it gets bid through the city.
So will it be ready for next month, next meeting to, to have an action item on? That, that's their question.
Well, I'm gonna say no, because even by the time I get it put together and then get back to the contractors that we've already talked to and then I gotta wait for them to get me something to return.
So you're going to say this, the second meeting in April, it should be ready?
Fingers crossed. If I have everything that I need. That's assuming we get it back in the time.
I just think you just need to put that date out there so that they're aware of it. And you need the time.
Fingers crossed.
Okay. We'll shoot for the second meeting in April. Okay, there's a liquor license, is number C. We've talked about this, Kerry came and talked about it. Bill has created, um, a copy for all of us.
I just sent you a letter that proposed, there's a difference between a special event license and a special use license, so.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a chance to read the letter, but I need direction as to what you're really trying to regulate. Because a special event license is only for nonprofit organization.
Right.
It's not for existing, for profit business or a license holder. A license holder is called a special use permit. Where they're able to use their license that they have for building downtown to put some liquor.
We, we are talking about nonprofits.
Just, okay.
Yeah.
Then, then we'll have to change the order. So if you just want it for special events for nonprofits, then I can complete it.
Okay. Very good, so you have your direction and we have a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If, can we have both, Bill? If we have a nonprofit.
So you'd have to, you have to allow a special use ordinance or you could put some ordinance, but you have a special use.
Interesting, but a nonprofit has to have a different than a special use.
A special event is just for nonprofits.
Oh, I think we should have both because sometimes.
Yeah, special use would be for one of your existing.
Right, and they do that now.
Yeah, when you license, you're getting a license to the person, you're getting a license to a patient. So you can't, if you move, you gotta get a new license, which is to move that location.
Okay.
This allows somebody just for a temporary.
Yes.
To have a.
Okay.
Sell liquor, diff- different location.
We can have both, a nonprofit and.
But they're distinct, yeah. Okay, both.
Yeah. Okay, now we go on to letter D, which is council input on the committee of the whole as a part of the agenda.
I'd like to speak on that matter. I think we need the committee as a whole brought back. For it, it, it's, I, to me, I think we're just a little mind boggling here and dysfunctional. I mean, we got discussion and action vote and we're coming back and coming back. We're not organized, but I think as a committee as a whole, we have discussion, we have a good discussion. And at the end of the discussion of anything, we're not sure, any of us aren't sure of anything, then we table it to the next committee as a whole. So that if someone's got a different idea or something, that's better. But then that way we can have our chance to study it and research it. Or we're on agreement as a head nod, then we can put it on the next agenda to vote. But right now, I think we need a committee as a whole to be brought back. And that way, like mayor, you know, you run the meeting, us eight people decide it.
Right.
You know, we are not, that's the way it should be. And so I would like to see the committee as a whole brought back, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree with Sue, I'm always in favor of committee as a whole. Um, it gives us additional information. What we're always looking for as Alderman is good information. We get it from the staff, we get it from the department heads. I love that we get it from the other Alderman as well. It gives us a chance to learn a lot about other topics that we normally don't know. So I'm the advocate.
I think, we, we've been all over the place here. We have, and we, and I mean, there's couples with band owners in the bandstand. Let's get organized and let's do this and go back to that. I would like to see that brought back.
Well, we just had this, well, just this meeting has been different. Um, and the reason that I changed it is because of lack of efficiency and effectiveness going forward. And if that's exactly what the committee of the whole, I agree with that concept. I think it should be discussed, but I don't think it should be discussed and discussed and discussed. You discuss at the committee of the whole, you get the information that you need, and then a decision needs to be made to put on the agenda for an action item so we can move forward with action items. So many times, look at what happened here with this band shell. It was two times on, now it's back to discussion. It, this is, this is, this is not my, I, I just want it to be efficient and effective. And if Sue, if that's the way it's going to happen, I applaud that.
And this way, we have a city administrator, that's his job.
Right.
When we have a discussion and we need things, he's the one that provides answers for us. And that's what we have been for. And I think we're all, I, I feel a lot comfortable if we do a discussion and we're not sure, we can have Dan go back and check it out and then put it on the next time if we haven't come to a conclusion. But I think, I want, I want that back, I really do.
I would agree, and I think there's an excellent example now. When we're talking about the band shelter, you know, we were talking about a hundred thousand dollars going to the drive's building, which would be open every day and there for another hundred years. We're also talking about seventy-five thousand dollars going to a band shelter, which I support the band shelter, but that's gonna be used several times throughout the summer. That's, that's a huge, and a topic like that, I think we should be discussing more than once. And I, I think we should welcome public input. So I think some, when you, quicker than other topics. But this one, where we're spending that kind of money, I think the public needs to know we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars, we're committing seventy-five thousand dollars right off the top to something that's gonna be used a couple of times throughout the, the summer.
And Keith?
I would go back to two because there's a lot of times we talk about stuff and then we need more information and things like that. Where we get, that gives the Alderman a chance to talk to amongst themselves if we think that it needs to be talked about or to find out more about what we want to do. And by just putting them on there and acting on it right away, we don't get that.
You don't have that. I, I will clarify, every, I've never done an agenda with the committee of the whole. So you can always, when there's an action item, you can always say, nope, we need more discussion or if we're gonna go forward or no, we're not. But it gives you an opportunity to move, like the twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand whatever generator that took three months, we all gave a head nod to that the minute you said it. We just needed to go forward with it.
The thing is, is even with the discussion portion in like we got tonight, because that basically acts like a committee of the whole, we're discussing it.
Right.
And I don't, and I, with Sue, I don't agree that we, you know, you don't just discuss it maybe once. On some items you can, there's items that we should, we need to be discussing. We need to be discussing more than we do.
Right.
And it's just gotta be, if this isn't, you know, after, well, I would say after two meetings, it's either gotta be, you gotta move it on or we're gonna put it on a back burner and not discuss it for a while.
Well, by having, committee as a whole, like I said, we have a city administrator, it's his job. And we've got questions, we can go to Dan, Dan can get the question. I mean, he's there to provide us the answers in a way. And I'm just more comfortable, because we're all over the place, making a decision. So that way when we vote, we know exactly where we're standing.
A little more organization.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with that, that's exactly, okay, I went back to the other, because I was like, we're not getting things done here, people. So, and it is my job to do the agenda and I, I will gladly go back to the committee.
The city administrator and mayor put the agenda together, right? I mean, don't you work.
But we do, we, we sit there, but it's stated in the I M O book that it's my job to, to create the agenda. And so, and if that's the way you want, we started out, when I first became mayor, all we have to do is go to one meeting a month and everybody will love it. Well, we tried that for a year and then we brought it back to the committee of the whole. And the committee of the whole keeps just, you know, I just want things to move forward and not forget things. We, I felt bad when Mr. Hune was here and it, it totally went off our radar. Um, that, that, that's what we can't miss out. And so we just need to be on it. And here again, we're at the position, we want to hold something for next meeting because not everyone's here. Well, when you have two meetings a month, it seems like, people say, well, then I don't have to be at one. It is the alter person's job, if they're not here for a meeting, to get caught up with the city administrator and Tammy, if she recorded the, the minutes or whatever, if you need to know what those are. But it is your job to get caught up so we don't have to catch those people that are missing a meeting up.
I think we all agree.
I agree with that.
But as a committee as a whole, I think we, as us eight people right here, will function a whole lot easier and better. We need to produce better functioning here, we're not, we're all over the place here.
I agree with that.
We need that.
If that's what you think, we'll do that. Committee of the whole.
I don't, you guys can all, well, that's right there.
You can work on your lines, just after we got the discussion portion in.
And I appreciate the discussion we have tonight, I will tell you, it's, it's been good.
I got a question.
Yeah.
We sit here and, I agree with Sue, I think we need that. But I think also, there are times when our committees are important too, to give data and information to the council to help us make some good decisions. And I kind of sense that's kind of going by the wayside too. Government is messy at times. I've been here ten years and it can get messy sometimes. And that's just, sometimes things just don't function very fast. And that's the process that burn place. But for me to make a good decision, I go home so often and I say, boy, I wish I had more time to have thought about this. I never thought about that. I think that pause is good, it's, it gives us a chance to digest stuff. And I get it, you want efficiency, I get that, but I, I've never seen governments be super efficient. So I think for us and our function and our capacities, I think we need that time to be able to get good data. And that's our city administrator, he, everything should funnel through him first. And then he disseminated to us. And then he can make the decisions at the council, like, oh, that are based on solid data.
And there was an portion in the committee that's really helpful. I mean, Sue, you had two of them in there, that was just good information for us to know, so.
Well, I just think we, I think we'll function better, the eight of us, you know? It's us making the decisions, the mayor conducts the meeting, but we make the decisions here.
That's right.
With the help of our city administrator, we'll be a little workaholic, but that's who, you know, I mean.
And, and I just want to give another example as far as besides Keith's generator for three times. If, if we, we did that with several things, like to, for the, um, drive's building, that has been on the agenda three times with absolutely no discussion. We either have to push it into discussion or something, we cannot be using a delay tactic to not make a decision. That Chuck has been here three times now to present. And at each time, there was no discussion. So that's what I want to eliminate. I love discussion, I think it's important, very, and especially for you guys to make the decision. It absolutely is. So I will change it, we'll go back to the committee again. No, you don't hold on to the committee.
No, I mean, we still got a couple.
Oh, Paul, did you want?
I think we've also enough.
Okay.
I think we've discussed this today.
Okay, all right. Now we go on to the cattail building rental rates. And right now, the rates are currently at forty for the Bolton in-town residents and seventy-five for the out-of-town patrons with a forty-dollar refundable deposit. Proposed rates from the park and rec committee is to raise it to a hundred dollars for in-town, a hundred and fifty dollars for out-of-town patrons with a hundred-dollar refundable deposit. Now, discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak on this. Well, I'm at with Eric and Nick at Parks and Recs. And there was things I didn't even realize, the cattail has a lot of maintenance out there. There's no, I mean, we get a little income, and I know this ain't a big difference either, but they got heating, cooling, rough, paint, windows, tables, chairs, appliances, um, toilets, fixtures and all this. And the, I, what is it, the twen- it's twenty, Tammy, what is the, uh, for deposit?
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars for. Forty dollars for a deposit. People are leaving messes. So I think if we make it a hundred dollars, they're more apt, they're gonna clean up. And I mean, it's a mess. Then our public works guys have got to go out there and clean all this up.
I think it's fun. I think that's.
And so that's my reasons to ask for this.
I think it's good.
We just want to make sure that we're providing a place for people who can't afford or don't have a home, you know?
And it's still incredibly important to a lot of people to be.
Right. And I mean, I checked it out. And I mean, this is not out of line at all.
And the rates haven't been raised there in a long time. They just put a new roof on it. They have mud jacking to do this year. It is pretty, pretty small, I think, for what you're getting.
And it's, and it's busy a lot. It gets busy.
About every weekend.
Especially coming up here in spring and summer, it'll be every weekend, so we'll have it.
Well, it's a wonderful place. It's a, it's a great service for people who can't afford or don't have a home.
And it was Harry and the guys that drew my attention to it as a councilperson, I didn't realize all that, so.
Okay, so that will be on. Do we want it on as an action item or do we want it as a discussion?
We discussed it. We just go back to that.
Okay. Thank you. We go on to committee reports. We have finance.
I have nothing.
Okay, personnel. Mr. Baker. Who's that?
Who's that?
No. Okay, economic development. Parks and Rec is on page forty-two. Sue, would you like to go?
The new pavilion is being built. It's gonna be twenty by forty. And we added new picnic tables before, but we're gonna have a couple more added to it. There'll be ten electrical outlets put in. We are not putting up barbecue things back up. People don't use them. They bring their own gas grills and everything. So it's gonna be, and there'll be a sidewalk, ADA, from the sidewalk to the pavilion, there'll be a sidewalk so people can.
Push the motion.
Yep. And we're in discussions on the Tenth Avenue Park, doing other things and layout and redoing basketball courts. So there is discussions there. Heritage Canyon, the house is gonna be painted. A few more updates in the house that is needed is gonna be taken care of.
The care takers house.
Huh?
The care takers house.
Yes.
Yes, the home?
Yep, the kiosk is going to be taken care of. The church needs some work, like a new broken floor and log cabin needs some work and they are looking into that. And the gazebo is coming down. It is falling down. Eric said it's bad. It is bad. It's, yeah.
It wasn't, but for a while.
He said, don't even think about it, it's coming down, so. And the cattail park, like raise the deposit fees and that's in need of some new park equipment, too. And so this is all being discussed and figuring out and we're working on, we are working on all those things, so.
That's awesome. I'm happy to hear about that. Awesome. Will the public have input on the?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't interrupt. Pardon me.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Um, we go on to public safety, anything? Or the marina? And that's on page forty-three? No? Those were presented. Now my mayor's report, it says update on the property nuisance violation and I'm going to turn that over to Chief Neplin so he can talk about what's being done. This was in the past, so keep us all updated.
Without mentioning any names, just out of the effort of privacy, I personally went out and made contact with five different locations that were high on some people's complaint list. I think we made a good headway out of those five. We got a boat gone that hasn't moved in three years. Got a bunch of trash cleaned up on one property and removed nine cars off of another one. One of them that probably will stick in everyone's mind is we're working with a plan. She's been advised that if she doesn't have the situation abated by the end of this month, April first, she'll get daily citations that will be compounding a hundred, a hundred and fifty, so on and so forth, up to the seven hundred and fifty dollar mark through the end of the month of March. And she understands that and she said that that was fine with her. So we'll, we'll see what progress we get by the end of this week and we'll work from there. Still.
And it should have this week.
Okay, so we, me and Bill have talked about a, getting on paper a meeting plan on how to take care of some things. So we got a few other properties we're working on. It's one day at a time, so we'll just keep plugging away at them.
Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. And under mayor's report, I would only like to say that starting the third Monday in April, the streetscapes, and that's anyone who owns a building downtown, will be meeting at the Masons. The Masons have offered their building at no charge. And so we will talk about the choices. There were several in the packet and there were several that were explained at our last meeting. So that's going forward and to help and assist Parks and Rec. Sue asked me to start getting together a group of parents. I would like that group of parents to be from each ward. And so I've started putting that together as well. So that's all I have. We go on to the city administrator report.
Mayor, may I ask, do you have a time for that streetscape meeting on?
Yes, five, I think it's five-thirty, but I'm going to double check.
Okay.
Yeah. It might be six. I think it's five-thirty, though. And we will be sending out emails to all the business owners for that. And then city administrators report, it is in your packet.
The only thing I want to add to that is I'll do a downtown presentation at the next meeting. It'll just be a real quick presentation of what we're doing, how we're funding the downtown revitalization. Mayor, Wendy, did, we're, is it just business owners or are you gonna have any residents, any council members?
No, just the building owners are the ones impacted by anybody owning. It could be residents, the loopers are there, they're residents, they'll be upstairs or things like that. But really, the people who've made the investment in those downtown buildings are the ones that have requested. And at first, there were only a few and then all of them wanted to be there. So I said, you bet, every one of them can be there, so. We go on to chief of police report. I do want to add, Dan, on yours, we did, you had Dan Dolan's contract included, it wasn't finished yet, so.
It would have to wait for the notice. You sell them a tip, just you'll have to put those in the newspaper for fourteen days, so that's in.
Right.
We'll be prepared next meeting.
Yep. Okay. And then we go on to chief of police report. And it's in your packet. Are there any questions for chief?
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up is I've been working on Eric with some of the park stuff. One of the things that we've noticed over the last few years is we've had some ongoing problems at the parks. And in light of that, we think we have a pretty good plan to put security systems, they'd be stationary twenty-four-seven recording at Drives Park, School Park, Marina, possibly getting a couple of systems up down there, cattail park, and multiple systems down in the Heritage Canyon area. So that's something we're working on and hopefully get you some more information on that at the next council meeting, so.
And on that note, you'll also have the budget in front of you. I'll get copies in your boxes here soon. I'll email them out to you as well tomorrow. See if you start looking them over, they'll be on the next agenda for, just take a look at them.
Okay. Good.
Not bad.
And Eric put a report in there for public works. Are there any questions for him? Congratulations upon getting your class and good job. I'd always like to see you further that position, so thank you for doing that hard work. Anybody else? Then we go on to old tourism. There was an article in the paper evidently and that was in, attached in your packet. Then historical society, it was also attached and we have two months into this year that were reported on and those were their expenses as they usually do. And does anybody have any questions for Barb? Otherwise, hearing none?
We had a good program last month. Young college student from the Oregon College who's on a scholarship under the Ronald Reagan Presidential Legacy Foundation. Just a great, talented young man and he was just a delight. And we've got that Reagan museum and so he was just thrilled to see what we had that time we did. And then our next program is the third Sunday in April and we're gonna talk about, we're gonna revisit the flood of sixty-five. So that's always a popular one for people to recall and elect. And so we'd encourage anybody who's interested in that to come.
Any further ado? And a motion to adjourn.
Whoa, whoa. Let's go to a little session.
Pardon me? Oh, we do need to go into closed session.
Salary for Barb.
I make a moment to go into closed session to discuss salaries. I'll second. Thank you, everybody.[1762.72]